Oh wow.
I remember that.
That's funny.
You can't do that. Yeah, she was walking through the street. I'm a nervous person. Yeah.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting in order by asking everybody to have their mics turned on. There we go. Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Michigan. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The real call.
Commissioner Robbins. Commissioner Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Bondi.
Present.
Commissioner Wessel is absent with prior notice. Commissioner Campbell.
Here and present.
Commissioner Alguayer. Here, Chairman Yoder.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have approval of four minutes. I believe we have three sets here to approve.
We can do them in one motion or?
We can do them in one motion.
No changes, no motion, fine. I've written down, but I would move that we approve the minutes before us from time to time. Three meetings.
One from a special session Tuesday, April fifteenth, regular session April fifteenth, and executive board on May thirteenth.
Thank you for fulfilling that order.
All right, it's quarter by Commissioner Bondi, discussion. Not all favor of that motion, signal of a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed in aye. Six zero. Right next up, we have approval of agenda, latest releases. Bondi.
Yeah, I'd like to take items three and four out of the consent agenda.
Okay. That'll be.
I could be two and three down the.
Equalization and.
Six, three and four, three and four.
So all of planning, the pre- on limitation. We'll just have that immediately after the first thing on action item.
Late, like usual, I had sent an email to the, our, to Mr. Dyer, Mr. Yoder, asking, it's a pretty simple thing, so I didn't think it would be controversial, that we are taking money from the DTR fund as part of our, as part of our expenditures, just that we make a motion to signify that that is a one-time exemption. We had some questions from the attorney that said, and I know there's no policy, please out there, but it just, I would feel comfortable if the, the board might consider a, a motion reaffirming that policy and saying that that's a one-time exemption. That we would do that. Because the transfer does not mean qualifications of our DTR policy. Oh, so would you want to add that as another four of the action items?
Sure.
Sure, if that, yeah. Yeah, we can find out one way.
Which one is that?
It might be a new agenda.
A new agenda item, call it.
A lay edition.
Yeah, a delinquent tax fund affirmation or reaffirm.
Seems like that would be. Put in the June agenda.
Except for making the expenditure approved. I mean, unless there's some controversy over, and then folks don't agree with the policy that's that we already had.
Just in direct formation.
No, I, I understand the issue and I don't disagree, but I don't know that it requires specific voted action. If what you're really saying is you're reaffirming the policy. When you say that we've made that, we're not doing this, what I guess I'm getting at is we're not doing a separate action. Of not voting on a motion to specifically do that. We are making a payment in the claims payable, I presume Kathy can address that. We've already done that, haven't we?
It's in post audit.
That's what I thought, so it's not something we would be. Sure, well, I would like to add it, then we can have a discussion.
Because it's on post audit, it's part of this agenda. So we could have it at that point, I guess.
And I should just double check that and see if it's in April or May.
I thought it was in April.
Yeah, I'd like to double check that before we really, in there.
Sorry, I don't know if this is appropriate. There was an email from. So kind. There was an email from Attorney Tim Perron on this issue.
Yep.
Did, were you in receipt of that as a board?
Yeah, we discussed it.
Right.
Okay.
So which expenditure are you talking about?
I thought it was this month, but now that I think about it, when we talked about it a week ago, there was a question on which, on which month it was.
I will go and check that while you're doing public comment. I can do that while you're in public.
If you guys don't want to talk, I mean, to me, it was a simple thing. Otherwise, I wouldn't be talking this much. It was the transfer, it was spending, paying for white broadband through the DTR fund. And, and so it's, it's kind of not that big a deal.
Would it be okay just to talk about it under financials when?
And I can, I can bring the attorney, Tim Perron's email with me as well.
Yeah, if you guys want, as I say, it would be just an affirmation, affirmation of our current policy.
Yeah, it's, it's in a budget amendment resolution, twenty-five oh oh six, is actually talks about the transfer of the DTR funds. You know, and, and it also has down there the American Rescue Act. So it is in.
It's a budget amendment, correct, and the check has been issued to pay for those two cabinets, so I'll just find out which month. If it was an April transaction, it'll be in your post audit, and if it's in May, it'll be in post audit in June.
Can I just ask that before on the next meeting agenda? I really, I did not think it would be that we could do. So a reaffirmation of the DTR policy, a discussion and reaffirmation of that policy. Yeah, if folks want to change the policy, I guess that would be the time to do it.
I would be more comfortable with that.
Okay. It's scheduled in June.
Correct, yep.
Should I make a motion that we accept the agenda as we get it?
So I could.
Yep. Items number three and four, set the agenda down to action, right?
Right.
Right. Supported by Commissioner Robbins, discussion. Not all in favor of that motion, signal of a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed in aye. Great, six zero. All right, next up, we have communications. Do you have any patients update from our administrator?
Just a couple of things of note. Just things that you might, we are working on for possible inclusion in the, in the June meetings, working on a couple potential proposals for use of the early childhood fund balance, dental and other services that we at the courts are suggesting we consider, talk to some of you about it, but we haven't yet fully vetted those those proposals, but I would expect them to be on, on your agenda for discussion in June meeting. We've also made progress on the lactation station that you, that you approved in the past. Vendor requires payment prior to shipping, and we're going to have that, we expect to have that paid by the end of this month, so we can get that, that shipped to us. There's also been some consideration, and I've been reviewing the, the appropriateness of having that project paid for through the early childhood village. There appears we've determined through our, through our legal counsel, that would be an appropriate use of the village, and I've also gotten some feedback from those that have proposed and supported the village in the past, and their, their consideration of that. Make sure that that's not a controversial use of those funds. I reported to you last, last week that we had scheduled a meeting, actually that occurred yesterday, to the Cross Blue Shield. Very productive. They provide us, provide, they can provide us with a number of reports that we think will be very helpful, report on the top twenty medications, both by prescription cost and aggregate cost to the entire county. They also can provide some alternatives to the stop loss program that we're currently, we're currently using. Again, thanks for your consideration. We are also looking at couple of, one program they had in particular that basically, particularly for very high-cost drugs, many manufacturers have programs that, that will reimburse or provide a discount to the user for those high-cost drugs that would actually and, and one of the programs that they have kind of aggregates all of those discounts and applies for them in one, you know, if you have two or three that, that are prescribed to you, they apply for them automatically and it, and it results in a reduction of the cost at the point of purchase for the, for the user. So that, that is something that we might be able to use to reduce our, to reduce our high cost based upon your, the discussion that we had last week. Also, I confirm how the, the stop loss program actually does function as I thought it did. As I indicated to you, it is essentially like a high discount policy, actually high deductible, deductible policy that, that essentially is purchased for each contract. It is not a fund that, that we draw money from, or, and, and most, most clearly, it's not a fund that we would pay interest for. So that, that, that meeting was quite, quite helpful.
Can I ask, is he saying that they can, are not going to offer the same program next year?
He's not saying that at all. He's saying that they will be giving us alternatives for, that you, that you might have to consider.
To continue that program.
Right. Yes. Also, I expect to have for your consideration, a presentation at the June meeting regarding the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health and their, their budget situation. Trying to keep it, we're starting to, I'm quite concerned about. What I expect to do is have a presentation from the, from, or the likely the chairman of the, the NLCMH board, talk about both what they're doing to get their budget balanced and their CEO's search of progress. Another, another item that we talked about at a couple meetings back was, I mean, you, you will recall that you authorized Grand Traverse County to apply to send out an RFP for a solid waste study. And concern was that we would have the money's hand to do that. We got notification this week that, from, from the state of Michigan, an eighty-one thousand dollar grant will become, come to us. We got confirmation of that, that grant based upon your approval at the, at the meeting, that that was taken. That vote was taken. Chair of deciding that, so we can receive that, that money and be assured that those, the funds to pay that, that for that program will be in our hands and that just simply promised to us. And then finally, remind everybody that Memorial Day service Monday at ten o'clock. I certainly plan to be there, and if anyone else is there, and you'd like to be recognized by the, by the program committees, let either me or, or.
Jim Simon.
What's that?
Jim Simon.
No, it's, oh geez.
Gene Kelly.
Gene Kelly. Let either me or Gene Kelly know, and we can make sure that you're recognized, program. Very much wants to, wants to recognize any, any of the elected officials that are present. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right, any questions for the administrator?
I didn't hear on the, when, when you met with our health, our health. Only the health of our health program. Did, how we don't monetize, because that was urgent three months ago. And is that ironing itself out, or? I, I, I think it is. What, what, one of the problems with, with self-insurance programs is it's, it's, it's hard to know exactly where you're going to be at any point in time, because particularly you often end up with people front-end backloading, you know, they, they use their benefits towards the end of the year. And I think that's probably what happened last year when the, when the urgency was, was, was indicated. I don't think we were anywhere, I don't think we were in a, in as, as bad a shape as, as it may have been made to sound. We had, the meeting we had was not just with our consultant, but we also had three representatives of both from the sales side and the customer service side at Blue Cross Blue Shield, we gave us quite a quite a bit of background about how they administer self-insure, self-funded plans we have. I don't think there's any, if, if we choose, if we wish to have to continue the program that we have, I don't see any, I didn't get any indication from them that they would that they would not continue to offer that program to us. It may cost more than you're willing to pay, that's really the issue. And, and what we, what we're, the information we're getting from them is we can, because remember what we do, we, we pay we pay a specific amount for the stop loss program, which pays everything over to twenty thousand dollars per contract. And that can be for a single person, or it can be for a whole family. You can imagine for a whole family, the twenty thousand dollars. You have a birth of a child, maybe a, a significant disease, expensive prescription drug. Some of the medications that are talking about, we pay upwards of a hundred thousand dollars just for that one medication for maybe four or five people. So you've got those five people right there getting into the stop loss have, have, have claims in excess of the stop loss. So we pay everything up to that twenty thousand dollars, and then we get reimbursed for everything over above that. And what we'll be presenting to you next month is a, is problem, well, what they provided us were three years of historical data from twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, to show you how that, how that program developed financially, how many, how many, how much we reimbursed from the stop loss, how much we paid directly, and, and what those costs, what those costs were. And I think that will put you in a better position to decide whether or not you want to modify that, that program. Perhaps increase the stop loss. If you went from a twenty thousand to a twenty-five, thirty-five thousand dollar stop loss, you might be putting yourself at, at risk for paying that, you know, the, the directly, but you're going to lower the stop loss, and they can give us formulas for that to show how much, you know, if, if we reduce, reduce the stop loss and reduce that portion of our premium by, let's say, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, how much would we have to, you know, how, how, how much would we have to save in claims that we pay directly in order for that to be at least a break even? That's really what the, that's really what the issue is. Our consultant is telling us, you know, we may even want to go to a fully insured program, which has no stop loss, but, but the premium that we paid across the shield pays for everything. And, and, and the, the idea is to give you all those alternatives when the time comes. Sounds like there's some pressure that really needs to be addressed, actually. Yeah. But I, I think we're in, in better shape than I think that we, that maybe it was presented in December. It's not a I don't see it as a, okay, situation.
Any other questions for the administrator? All right. We will move on to public comments. We have three minutes. Anything agenda specific? If you have any members of the public wishing to go off a public comment? Yes, sir.
You want to go first? Go ahead. Is there a culture?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Name is Casey Potts, resident of Suttons Bay Township. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about a couple of agenda items connected to the two percent applications. I have a compliment for the commissioners, and I have a challenge for the commissioners. Not here to change any minds, I'm just here to present a little bit of thought and share a couple of things with you guys. First of all, I'd like to give a compliment to Mr. Bunnock and Mr. Wessel. I know Mr. Wessel is not here tonight, but those two gentlemen have spent a good amount of time asking some thoughtful questions. We have read some of the comments in the paper, but those two gentlemen in particular have connected back with the school district and have had thoughtful, engaging conversations with the school district, of which I, I served in the role of superintendent about the two percent grant application process. And with that in mind, I would say that over the last five years of my tenure in the district, I have spent countless hours looking at the two percent grant application process. It is complicated, complex, and nuanced, and tied to consent judgment between the state of Michigan and all the tribes located within the state of Michigan. And that consent judgment sets forth a series of obligations, rules, processes, and procedures by which the two percent process, two percent refers to electronic gaming revenue collected at casinos operated by tribes in the state of Michigan. My challenge to this board is to ask questions about the implementation of that process as it relates to Grand Traverse Band. Does it align with what other tribes in the state of Michigan are doing? Take a look at the application. One of the questions asked, number fifteen is, if new staff is required, will preference be given to Native American applicants? Ask yourself, for an organization who checks a box, what implications that might have for that organization in this board? If that box is checked yes, and those actions are taken. Ask yourself, when was the last time Suttons Bay Public Schools or other local units of government in the immediate vicinity of electronic gaming casinos were awarded two percent funds? Ask yourself, this is the last thing. When you're approving these applications, who is being awarded two percent? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Keith Ashley, Leland Township. I don't have the experience of the prior speaker as to this two percent grant, but and I know Mr. Bunnock will probably address it when it comes on the agenda, but I tend to side with Mr. Bunnock on this, that the two percent tribe contribution in my understanding in simple terms is in lieu of taxes. And I know it's a big document, it's got a lot of stuff in it, but that's what I think was the basic understanding. And if they were taxed as everyone else is, this revenue would likely be used within the community for the needs that they have, not for charity purposes. And I suspect that most villages and townships have a wish list, the school districts as well, of the needs that won't qualify for grants. I'm from Leland Township, we don't have a grant writer per se, and so we probably miss out on some opportunities for money by not being aware of it or being able to go after it. So I favor that the two percent be looked at as something that has to come back into the governmental community, not into the charity side of things. Thank you.
Get a public comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Thank you all for your service and your time. My name is Taylor Moore. I'm a resident of Maple City, Michigan, and I'm the director of Food Rescue of Northwest Michigan, and I've been working there for ten years. And because of recent federal cuts to social service providers, I'm here to make as a part of making sure that community leaders are updated on our programming, as well as ensuring that funds that are appropriated by Congress are maintained. Quickly, Food Rescue is a nonprofit program. We distribute surplus and donated and purchased food to seventy-eight food pantries and meal sites in the five northwest counties at no cost. In Leonard County, we serve Leonard Christian Neighbors, Five Loaves Two Fish, Empire Food Pantry, the Grand Traverse Band, and an additional seventy-four other programs in the five counties. Every Monday, we distribute three thousand pounds of food to Leonard Christian Neighbors. We work with thirty-three different farms in the area. One-third of people using food pantries are children, and another third are seniors. And another third have someone in their household with a disability. Without our services, many programs would be unable to serve these people. Two months ago, we lost approximately two hundred thousand dollars from the local food relief fund, which was used to purchase food from local farms, like corn and beef from Kalinsky Farm, tomatoes from Clint, from tomatoes, bakers, apples. And two weeks ago, we lost funding to our AmeriCorps Vista program as well.
You just, what agenda item you're referring to?
Oh, this is, yes, this is just an update of community services.
Okay, first agenda item, or the first public comment is agenda specific, so.
Yeah, well, I can come back at another time, hopefully.
We have another public comment at the end of the meeting where we'd be more.
Oh, perfect. I, I jumped my, I jumped the gun. Hey, thanks, y'all. Sorry about that.
You can finish afterwards.
Okay. My apologies for that. Yeah, my apologies.
Right, yes, Kathy.
Kathy Dawkins, Leland Township. This is regarding the two percent. I worked in the Leland County Family Coordinating Council back in the late nineteen nineties. During that time, we worked with different nonprofit agencies along with the governmental agencies to provide safety nets. I looked at the um, policy draft that Administrator Dyer put together. He talks about the consent judgment that occurred in nineteen ninety three. And then in two thousand nine, the Grand Travers Ban adopted guidelines. I think we need to look at the history of what's been going on with this program. And I am concerned that this issue has arisen. So many years after it first started in ninety three. I know that back in the late nineteen nineties that we went through all this before. And um, I thought it was a dead issue as to whether or not. The nonprofits could go through the county and other governmental units to get the two percent. I think it's a slap in the face to the band to tell them. That they can't make the guidelines that they want to give up their money. Um, on this two percent. The people who are serviced through these nonprofits are residents of our county. Um, we've heard from the superintendent over at Suttons Bay stating that the schools are missing out. Well, they really aren't because their students are also receiving the benefits. From these nonprofits with this two percent money, and I think we're ignoring that. We serve the residents of our county with that two percent that went through um, very hard. Um, rigorous guideline uh, protocol. You guys go through it, GTB goes through and it comes back and the money is distributed. So I I really think it's a waste of time and I don't know why we're talking it about again. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Celeste Crouch, Glen Arbor Township. I'd like to follow up what Kathy uh. She actually took just about everything that I was going to say. Uh, if we think about nonprofits, we have to think about they provide very unique. Services to residents of the of counties, to people. And this program was set up that governmental units would. After looking at the thirteen step. System that you've set up. And it 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 passed muster. A team of evaluators said, yes, in fact. This nonprofit has been approved by this unit. And of course, they're doing things that no governmental units would ever be allowed to do. And yet the tribe looked at inland seas and um, home sweet home. And they said, this is where we'd like our money to go. And in my opinion, the tribe in this county doesn't get half. The credit it deserves for what it provides us in the way of a more humane culturally. A diverse community and um. And the fact that they're building four bridges, uh, that they captured the funding. And are doing that in this county. Uh, it just seems to me to be quibbling about wording. When it was, as Kathy said, all set up and the tribe, I think, deserves uh, credit and and it to. Somehow say that they're thinking about how the money should be used is that appropriate would be a slap in the face. Thank you.
The other public comment? All right, thank you. Next up, we have Commissioner Comments. All right. We are on to our consent agenda items. Now let's read a statement here. Purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non controversial. Items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be moved and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will automatically be respected and will not need a second. Fine.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to uh, to pass the consent agenda as amended. Second.
Order back, Commissioner Robbins, have the roll call.
Commissioner Bunnock?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Chairman Noder?
Yes.
Commissioner Ondere?
Yes.
Six zero.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, um, under action, we have number one, equalization tax rate request for summer of twenty twenty five.
Yeah, um.
Yep.
I I wanted to bring this up because we actually received a a paper from from the finance director. And uh. There is almost twenty three thou- twenty three million dollars that that we have in accounts. I mean, I know it's for many different things, but with with that much money aside, I I, you know, I I did say yes to this. Um, last week, but I'm thinking that we really have an opportunity to lower taxes. Here if if uh, if there's a desire by this board to do it. With that, that amount of money um, in the bank for Leland County, I think that. That it would be good to give the people of the county a little uh, a break on some of their taxes. You know, we're uh, we're uh.
Equalization, which that.
Oh, that's number one.
Yes, he made that one and two. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I mean, he he made a higher rate, but he actually made a one and two. So that's so. So so I I just thought we could, we need to think about it a little bit. I know we only, I had approved it last week, but I. I just think there, we have an opportunity and we should think about lowering it. I know there are some things that are um. You know, that are pending with with negotiations, you you know, with the 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 law enforcement and other things, but. I just believe that that we do, we always have that opportunity and I think we ran on fiscal responsibility and. Okay, I think everybody here did, and so we should really think about. If we can give money, let the people keep their own money. It's not giving it back. It's letting them spend it wisely as opposed to us putting it in the bank. So I I would, I would make a motion that we, that we lower this rate enough to give at least. A hundred thousand dollars or more back to the people. Or actually let them keep.
All right, there's a motion on the floors. Just support for that motion. All right. All right, so we'll just move on to the next.
I was gonna support it, oh, for discussion.
Yeah.
My my question is. Uh, we we've done this and we've approved this. Is there a timeline? That we have to meet on this that. You know, can we do this in the next tax cycle or?
No, it has to go, we have to do it now. That's why it's here.
Okay, well, what's the timeline of us sending this to the next step of the state? I mean, do we have a a timeline? Business needs to be done?
I think it's the end of this month.
I believe that that's, well, it the form itself has to be submitted to the state in September, but we've got to act now and. This is part part of the problem with the way, the way uh. The General Property Tax Act is structured in Michigan. You have to approve the mileage. Now for the budget year that you're going to, you haven't even talked about your budget yet. You could, you could. After your budget, actually reduce the taxes in your budget resolution that, but they're going to be, they're going to be collected starting. In July, so that's why we have to act now.
That's what I'm saying. Do we have time to?
The one thing I think you really need to take a look at. The report that you got from finance does not indicate that there's twenty three million dollars in the bank. There's twenty three million dollars in fund balance. And and cash, but a lot of that is allocated. It's not, it's not like we've got twenty three million dollars you can spend any way you want to. There is twenty three million dollars that is, the bulk of that is allocated to other, to to the programs already. And is anticipated to be budgeted in the. Now, in in this budget year as well as the next budget, so. Without a specific review, I would be very reluctant to recommend that you do uh. Any reduction at all. I understand the, I understand the, the the desire for that, but I would. I would be reluctant to recommend to do anything.
All right, Commissioner Algar's hand was up for a while. I'll let her speak and then move on to Commissioner Rob, Commissioner Campbell.
It's a wonderful idea. However, we have not. As our administrators said, we have not even touched the budget yet. We have no idea how much money we're going to get from the state next year. We have no idea what the state is getting from the federal government next year. There are, we have programs that. Are very tenuous at this point, things like Meals on Wheels. At this point, do not see money in their future. So with. Everything is nebulous as it is right now and people's needs very, very real. I sure wouldn't want to act precipitously. I think that would be irresponsible and we have no idea. What we're going to look like to the other board.
Commissioner Robbins?
I guess I'm going to start and go back four years ago when I did this. The concerns I have is, that's a great idea. But you come here tonight and throw a hundred thousand dollars out, but you didn't give a breakdown. What is it actually saving taxpayers? I mean, the last time we pulled this off with you four years ago. It looked like a great thing and then in the end it was only forty cents per taxpayer. So I mean, a hundred thousands or twenty three thousand people are not what our taxpayers are. I mean. I wish you would have came here and did your homework. And gave us figures what it's actually saving, what the people are going to get back. I mean, I I just can't, I don't want to just give them forty cents back. That's a slap in their face. Makes you look good, but doesn't save anything in their pocket. Look, they go pick up four pop cans.
All right, Commissioner Campbell?
Wow, thank you. Thanks for the, for the long to talk. I I don't believe that Commissioner Bunnock is speaking to make himself look, but I think this is a. This is a sincere belief of him, so I think he comes to the table very open about this. I made comments last meeting that I did not believe. Uh, until, until at least myself personally, but I think the entire board went through a budget cycle. Um, and determined those types of, the determined revenues and expected expenditures that really was a. A wise decision to make at this time. At the meeting I was at yesterday, I was, I I was informed that we we think. That the belief now is that our state uh, revenue sharing is going to be in good shape. But the the main point I wanted to make is that. I I too, um, that I'm not questioning the accuracy of the twenty three million dollar figure, but. What we are dealing with here is a millage, a property tax to fund our general. Just our general fund. And we we have some very, very lucrative, if you will, let's just say some uh, well financed programs with senior citizens. And and our young child. Uh, but our our, my concern is our general fund. And I did run some numbers and the the critical time is the end of July. And at the end of July, in the general fund, we've had about one point six million dollars. And that's the critical number because our property taxes don't go out until the next month. And one point six million dollars might sound like a lot of money. Well, in two thousand seventeen, our budget was thirteen million dollars. Okay? That was quite a bit of money for that. That was like over twelve percent. Well, last year our budget was seventeen and a half million dollars. We still had one point six million dollars left at the end of July. And that is eight percent of our budget. Of our general fund budget. Uh, I. These, these are the numbers I I believe to be true just from looking at at reports that I've seen. So I don't, I don't feel comfortable right, right now and I can actually, I don't think we're swimming in money. At least in our general fund and as far as funding the basic services in this bill.
All right. I'm under a lot of comments here. I don't feel comfortable. I felt good with the discussion we had last month or last week. To keep the rate as is and I feel comfortable with that. And just, yeah, I mean, what our finance director put out, you know, we do, it does look like we do, but. As our administrator said, a lot of that is already budgeted for, um. You know, and I I'd rather go through the first, go through a budget cycle myself first to kind of see. Where we're at, uh, go over there and see what, see what we could do next year possibly, but. With that, any other discussion on that?
No.
All right. If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or both say nay? Fails, one to six, one to five.
Then the other, the other thing, um, I made.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, is that, um, yeah, last week, the the administrator talked about he. He made some changes to these remonumentation um, contracts. And we usually, we will send that to our corporate council to look at any changes where contracts change. To make sure that it's all right. And and I think we we failed to do that last week. So I would ask when we approve these that we make sure that corporate council looks at them and and okay's what the changes are.
Let me make sure that you understand what I did. The only change that I made was changed the date and amounts, which were the the budgeted amounts, number one, and then it removed one paragraph related to. Um, termination of the contract due to the COVID. Epidemic.
Correct.
Otherwise, those those contracts were were fully vetted previously by corporation council. We typically do not send. A contract that they've already drafted for us. And approved as to form when all were changing is the 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 dates and the amounts.
Well, but but we we do have a contract with them to look at at contracts and we already paying them six thousand dollars a month, so. It doesn't cost us anything to make sure if we change it, just to make sure that the change is okay. I think that's what it makes sense. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't approve them today, but I'm saying we should do it with, with approval from corporate council. That's all I'm saying. So so I would make the motion that we approve these contracts. And and have them referred to corporate council to make sure they're all, they're okay.
Do you, so the question for the clerk here, do you need those motions as you had? Was that motion satisfactory or did you need it to when you had an intention there?
Um. I can do this. Um, I can do them. All as one. I can incorporate all of them as one. I know what you're saying, but after we do this. Just as a point of reference, are we going back to the equalization?
Uh, no, that was the previous one. We're now under planning, which was moved from the consent.
Then we, the potential, so yeah, we have to do that. You're right.
You're right.
We do, we need to.
Bored down the motion.
Yeah.
Oh, down the motions.
Correct.
This one hasn't been second, so could.
I'll remove it and go back.
Okay, we'll go back and, all right, go back with that original motion then.
Yes.
Thanks for that. Thanks for catching that. Do we have a motion then? Equalization?
Um, yes. Okay, so the motion, you know what you say when the green sheet. And the present item number.
Yeah.
I can.
All right, Mr. Algar.
Um, I would move that we approve the mileage rate that does not exceed the maximum allowance. Milled levy, column nine, and place that mileage rate in column ten. Is this the right one?
Yes.
Okay, good. As the mileage rate requested to be levied on June, July first. And return the L four oh two nine to the equalization director.
Second.
All right, supported by Commissioner Robbins, discussion. Not all there that motion signifies, say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Period five one. Now on the planning, along with the remonumentation. So, all right. So, all right, so you had a motion?
Yeah, so, so my motion is to approve the, 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 the planning of A, B, C, and D. Remonumentations. Um, with, with the recommendation that it be, they send to the corporate council to be approved.
All right, so support for that? All right, that, that motion fails. Another motion then, I guess, to approve those. Commissioner Allen?
I move to approve the twenty twenty-five remonumentation grant in the amount of thirty-three thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars.
Second.
May it's important, discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to send it to corporate council to have them checked out. If we're gonna change a contract, we should send it to them. That's a pen tradition. We've always done that. You pay them a, a stipend so that they will do that, but we're not gonna do it this time for what reason? It's not gonna cost us anything.
I trust our administrator to change dates.
Okay.
This is minimal changing. I think it's a waste of our corporate council's time. To have him review whether we put the right date in.
If we have a problem with it, then, okay, we'll deal with it.
The other discussion?
It's just a, a point of fact, is there an extra charge by the owner for that or is that part of what we do any?
Any other discussion on that motion? Right, not all there that motion, say aye.
Which motion was this?
The one you made originally, which is.
Okay, I say aye.
Yep. All right, all opposed, say nay?
Nay.
All right, motion period five one. Other motion now for all board, is that correct?
That was, she just made it for the first one, so you're, you're gonna have to combine the next one or just keep going with. That was just a remonumentation grant, now you're up to the one.
Yeah, so we got three others, or then is there, could we possibly combine them all together?
Kind of, so.
We'll make a motion. Commissioner Allen?
I would move to approve the monumentation, remonumentation peer group agreements. As prepared by the county administrator, without non-land surveying, Palmer Land Survey Grant Travis Surveying. For. Okay, this is where it gets tricky to combine them. Eight hundred dollars each with cost to come from the remonumentation account. One oh one, four seven five, two four five, eight oh one, zero zero zero, and. With the Leland surveying as prepared by corporate council with cost to come from remonumentation account. One oh one, four seven five, two four five, eight oh one, zero zero zero. And service agreements with on non-land survey, Palmer Land Survey, Grant Travis Survey. And Leland on land survey as prepared by our corporate council. With. As prepared by council, corporate council with cost to come from remonumentation account. One oh one, four seven five, two four five, eight oh one, zero zero zero.
Second.
All right, supported by Commissioner Robbins, discussion, Mr. Money?
You see, that's where the, the actual, the motion is fault because it wasn't prepared by corporate council.
It weren't prepared by corporate council.
They were amended by you, though. So they're not prepared by corporate council.
All right, any other discussion?
Okay, I agree with that. I mean, probably. That's not an accurate motion. Only were originally prepared by corporate council, wanted change to say originally, but.
With corporate council with update, with updated dates.
That's fine.
Right, so is that an amendment or an amendment to your motion?
I will amend to add with updated dates.
Okay. The second, and prepared by corporate council.
Okay.
Trying to get the language, I guess.
These were approved. The administrator and I have already discussed this. These were approved by corporate council. Is your amendment? To say as approved by corporate council, previously were with updated dates by the administrator?
That sounds great. I'm asking, I'm not telling. I'm just trying to see and I'm trying to get to the middle of this.
Sounds like our motion, or individually made, Commissioner Algar's motion, she said that is correct. That's what she's pushing.
That's exactly what I said.
So the individual that supported that is whoever, was that you, Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
All right, you're okay with that?
Yep.
All right, more discussion, Mr. Money?
Yeah, it also included in removal of the COVID thing. So now that's another, would have to be a second amendment because you, it's doing different. There are different. This is exactly why I said, why I did initially.
All right, any other discussion? All right, not all in favor of that motion, signal of a say aye? All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Period five one. All right, next up we are to administration, which is now number three. A, applications, number one, first one is inlet sees education association. Motion?
We've got a green sheet, right?
Motion to be a green sheet, it's a yellow.
Somebody else make a motion, please.
I move that Leon County Board of Commissioners approve the two percent application. For inlets education association. Leo Creek Reserve fifteen thousand for submission to the Grant Travis ban for consideration in the spring of two thousand twenty-five cycle.
Or, all right, order, Commissioner Walter? Discussion? Mr. Money?
I, I just wanna know how does this funding decision help, you know, schools or local government departments? You know, and, and are you going, are you being physically responsible when you donate funds? In, in basically property taxes or lieu of property tax to charities? I just wanted to think about that because all of you were having to be physically responsible.
All right, Commissioner Allen?
I would say that this serves the people of Leland County. It serves our citizens, which we are not able directly to do. So I am grateful for these grants. In that it offers services and opportunities for the children and adults of this county. That we cannot do as a county government.
I can't think of a better way to serve than to serve the younger generation.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, I would say these are not grants. Remember, these are in lieu of property tax. And that's why did the consent agree?
Any other discussions? All right, if not, all in favor of that motion, signal of a say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Period five one. All right, next up for the home sweet home nonprofit housing preparation.
I move that Leon County Board of Commissioners approve the two percent allocation application for sweet home. Our home sweet home, non-profit housing preparation, twelve thousand with a fifty percent match assist. And home purchases for submission to Grant Travers, paying for consideration in the spring two thousand twenty-five cycle.
Second, supported by Commissioner Campbell, discussion? Mr. Money?
Yeah, you know, when, when you approve these things, just, just ask yourself. What, what government agency, whether it's a fire department, whether it's a school, whether it's a library, is not gonna get funding if it goes to this. Because that's what this money was meant for. It's, it wasn't meant for what, what you continually do. Just think about that.
My question is. I have one received. The request. From a government agency. For a percent.
Want to answer that?
Well, we don't, we don't have one on the table, so they don't have one on the table.
It doesn't come to us. It goes directly to the trial question. We're discussing this two percent.
Yeah, yeah, it's part of the question next month.
All right, so I have to do a second uncalled question, is that correct?
Well. Yes, you need a second to call a question.
Commissioner Robbins, call to questions, there's support for that?
Yes.
Supported by Commissioner Algar. All in favor of calling questions, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Period five one. Now we're back to the original motion. All in favor of the original motion, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Period five one. All right, next up we are to the two percent policy draft for discussion only. More you wanna add to that, Mr. Administrator?
No, nothing beyond what I said during the executive session. I. Did my best to develop a policy that was consistent with consent judgment. With the guidelines adopted by the Grant Travis ban. And also, what I understood the board wanted to see or a process that. Assured that as much as possible that there was some support for this. Or, a, any non, any nonprofit request was supported by either an elected official or department head. Of the county in some, in some fashion. And then you would get a, you would get a, instead of a speculation regarding what those. What that support might be, you would get a letter that states specify exactly what that support is. So you have some basis for determining whether you should approve or reject it.
So are we approving your policy tonight?
That's what I. Well, that's up to you. That, that certainly do that and put it in the form of a policy that's. That is binding on the administration to use when it considers these applications.
So.
And how they, and how they come to you for, 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 for decision.
Before even, can we have discussion? It says discussion, I am, so we have discussion first.
That's all discussion, yeah, because we have no motion for it now, so.
And, and I voted no last week, I was going to vote no. Sorry, Will, I kinda had you on that one. But my reasoning, I, I had two issues with it. And, and they were kind of, it, it, didn't, and they were. How involved the county should be in inserting its voice and thoughts on these applications. There's a provision that we, the county administrator, would, would review these applications. Based on the tribe, based on the tribe's priorities or application process. And make a determination whether these applications met the tribe's standards. And I believe that that's something that the tribe should do rather than us. I mean, applicants do their best to, to follow the guidelines and if they don't. And, and perhaps there's a question if they don't, what, as to whether they actually made that bar or didn't make that bar. I hate to see the county step in and say, oh, you didn't make the bar, but then have members of the tribe or the tribal council say. Well, how come you didn't just order it to us? It's, it's our policy. The other has the county reviewing whether the applicant, this is my memory. We're reviewing, reviewing whether the applicant had completed the requirements of the grant. And I know the tribe does do that. They, they don't just send out the money and not follow up. You, you, but should that applicant prove to Leon County that they have met the requirements of the grant? Or at that particular time, should that, should that judgment be made by the Grant Travis ban? And my thought is, the county doesn't need to become, and I think I used the word big brother last time. In either of those two areas, let the tribe decide if it meets their requirements. I, I, I mean, we can have our separate requirements, but as far as meeting the tribe's requirements, I don't think that's our responsibility. And I don't think it's our responsibility to check up on them after six months to see if they met. I guess would be our, our expectations as to fulfilling the grants. So those are my, my two. But that, that's, that's why I voted no, just those, those two things.
All right, Mr. Bunny can then, Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I just had a couple of changes in it. I, on page, on number nine. Where it says, it should be two percent fund applications instead of grant, because it's not grant. And then the same thing in number thirteen, it has grantee and I think it should be two percent recipient. And, and, and again versus grantee recipient. Those are just the only changes that I would, I would make at this time. I do, I do wanna say something is that maybe the commissioners don't understand. We are not the only ones who put applications in. The, the village of Sutton Bay does, the, the schools do, the library does, Leland Township does, Empire Township does. I mean, all of those towns, we don't know what they're putting in. We will, we won't see it. So when we put in th- these things, we could deny them whatever they're asking for. By having that money go, because it's a limited amount of funds. It's, it's a limited amount of their payment in lieu of taxes. And when we, when we ask for charities and they pick those out. It may be the fire department, which has asked for funds, doesn't get what they need. So, I, I, and I, I get the feeling that we don't understand that that's, that is happening. So, so, you know, when, when we, when we talk about it, but anyway, that's, that's. That's why I, I think we need to have a policy that we follow and go through. We can't just wing it as we go along.
All right, Commissioner Robbins, and then Commissioner Walter?
Thank you for that information, Commissioner Bunny. Since last Tuesday, I'm digging up stuff here on this and. Again, I feel as a county here, we're, we're the gatekeeper. That's all we are. Before anybody could put the application in, we don't decide who gets the money. We, we're a gatekeeper to move it on. And we have turned down, people don't, don't, and have not moved it on. But what I did was, yesterday I did some digging and thanks to. Administration there, I dug up this. It goes back to Kathy, you're right, ninety-three, but it didn't start till ninety-four. If you wanna get this, it's available down there. It goes way back to ninety-four. Tells everybody that applied, everybody that received. And what, there's a pattern here. For a lot of years, from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand, I mean, almost fourteen, you didn't see any non-profit. I'm not sure what happened there. I don't know. It's because Leon County took up our tax base. I don't know. Um, what I did notice too was, of everybody that applied, if you take an average over the last. Thirty years, thirty-one years, only about twenty-five percent of people that apply to us, you can get the grant. So, uh, it's a tough process, but we, you know, we turned it on to them. I mean, one thing I did notice in here, but Will just mentioned is. Uh, there's nothing here from Sutton Space Schools. There's nothing for our fire departments. It's pretty much for the first twenty years, it was our county, our sheriff department, uh, planning commission. You name it, mainly sheriff benefits quite a bit for a lot of years. I mean, maybe you as a school, maybe you're applying a different way, but, you know, I think we're responsible for what happens in this building. The school can do so their way to get their grant and same with the fire departments. I don't know if you guys are applying, I don't know. Um, but I just, you know, I feel we got a good process here. You know, I thank Minister Dyer for coming up with a great policy. I think we can move forward with that, but it's our job to. To, as a gatekeeper, I mean, they can pass it or, or not, except sometimes we don't. And I think we just need to leave it alone and it's the tribe, we need to respect them. It's their program. And they're, they're gonna decide who gets the money. And like, yeah, we need to respect the tribe. Thank you.
Walter?
That, that was pretty much my thoughts too, but if there is a question like that, should we? Not have to be in the board, should we have a coalition of all the government agencies in the, in the.
Should we have a coalition of all the government agencies in the, in the, in the county to approach these two percent issues? I mean, should we, we have a meeting with the commissioner and one member of each township as they're approving grants going forward? So we all get together, what's, what's priority is. But that's not how the system is now. What I'm saying is, if that's an issue, then somebody needs to voice why. What's the issue for not approving the grant as opposed to, you know what I'm saying? Understand what I'm saying? If there's no communication between, so Suttons Bay Township's asking for something, there's no communication here. We don't know if we're taking anything to Suttons Bay Township, and since nobody's ever addressed it, it is probably not an issue. I mean, we have a policy, we have a, a just proposed policy, and we have this history. So, you know, I, I, I think the policy is pretty good, and we should go forward with it.
I generally agree with what you said, Commissioner Campbell. They're the ones who make the decision. We're just forwarding on grants that meet basic requirements. I will recall, I haven't said this in the past, but I, one year we did restrict, or it was severely restricted, what we would send in. And it was just things that the county needed, the county building needed, the county, whatever. And guess what? The tribe did make their decision and we didn't get anything. This is their decision. And I believe their heart on this issue is to help our citizens. And our citizens, our nonprofits have a unique opportunity to help our citizens, as I said, in ways that we cannot do. So it's not our job. Our job is to forward these and allow the tribe to serve our citizens in a way that they can. So I will support the policy, and I think we need to look at it like it's their decision, really not ours.
With that thought, does it make sense, the points I had made, to not evaluate these to see if they come up to the tribe's standards? And, and, and doesn't, doesn't it make sense for us to judge whether they came up to the tribe's standards in six months? We're putting ourselves in a position where our beliefs may not be the same, or our determination may not be the same as the tribe. I just think it's, I, I just think it's cursory. I just don't think it's needed, if indeed that's the funds.
Well, we're not judging in six months.
Yeah, well, we're following through and finding out. That's part of the policy is that we would, we would evaluate after six months to see if they completed their projects.
And then I, I can address why I included that if you'd like to.
Yeah, I'd like to hear it.
I appreciate it.
First of all, the reason is not to, yes, we are a gatekeeper. I think Commissioner Robbins nailed it right on the head. We are a gatekeeper. The idea is to have a policy that permits me to essentially assist applicants and say, look, you missed this, you missed this point in your, in your application. If it gets submitted, it's going to get turned down. It, as to assist them in, in presenting their proposal as favorably as possible. Not to become a substitute to what the tribe, the tribe to value, because they're going to do that. Whether we have a policy, they've been doing it without a policy for, since nineteen ninety-four. This only gives me your permission essentially to act as your gatekeeper. You're not going to consider, why would you ever consider a, a passing on to the tribe, a proposal that is demonstrably deficient in the tribe's requirements? And it just gives me the ability to assist those applicants in doing, in, in doing so. Nothing more than that. And, and frankly, without that policy, without that provision in the policy, I still do that to help, help people that were making submissions or wanted to make submissions through, through the county. So it wasn't, it wasn't, is not an intent to substitute my judgment or even your judgment for what the tribe will ultimately exercise regardless of our, our consideration. And then as far as, again, it's the, the six-month review, tribe already requires that. All we're doing is saying, we're going to collect that data as well and provide it to you so you know that there's been an effective use of those funds if they're, if the tribe grants to them. You may decide based upon, based upon someone's past performance that did not spend the, the money as they, as they were intended to, that you would not forward on a request for them in the future, for example. That's the only reason for grant, for, for collecting that data to give you information to inform your decision.
No way.
Alright, Commissioner Robbins with that.
Just one, one thing I wanted to add that I didn't touch on first was, you know, there's been an article written, social media yesterday about this. It's been brought up several times even at this table, that we're breaking the law. Well, that concerns me. One, we're breaking the law, we've been doing it for thirty-one years. Two, if we've been breaking the law, how come no one's reported? How come no one's investigated us? I mean, we've had our corporate, or our, our attorney look at this, we're not breaking the law. Tribe has looked at it. Attorney Krasinski, our administrator, you know, he has a P number, he can review this stuff too. Folks, we're not breaking the law. So let's try to put that fire out too.
Alright, Commissioner Bunnick.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate him getting that, Commissioner Robbins getting the information. And I, I think you should look at who was elected in twenty fourteen. That's, you know, there, there were two commissioners, I believe, that were elected that year, that, when this really started. And, and, and at the same time, who were they that solicited, you know, Holst stretch and Inland Seas? That they actually came to tell them that they needed to bring it forward. They were solicited. And, and we need to look at commissioners doing that. And so, I mean, that, that's the unfortunate thing that's happening. One of them is Leonard St. Mary's School, which is a private school.
Right.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Or we want to continue discussion here?
Yeah, so.
I'm going to win.
I'm, I can approve.
Oh, right. But it says.
The policy.
No, no suggestive motion, so I, did we, I mean, I guess proper protocol, would it be best to forward it to the junior meeting or an official motion rather than? That, I don't know.
Well, I, I would make a motion that we pass this policy, you know, can, can put it into effect.
I'd like to amend that motion to change.
We gotta have a second to the direction of the motion first.
What was the first motion?
Motion to approve the policy.
I second it.
Can I amend the motion to approve the policy with the exceptions of number twelve and thirteen?
Alright, folks, just the county administration should be responsible. The administrative contracts and insurance clients, number thirteen is on a semi basis. The county administrator will provide a report to the county board describing services provided by each grantee, by each two percent grantee and document whether or not the grantee complies with the grant travers ban, two percent guidelines on contract Leonard County.
I'm not comfortable especially with thirteen.
I would not recommend you exclude twelve because you're not talking about the contract between the tribe.
So that's in your initial work?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. It's just number thirteen.
That's a contract that we provide. Because part of the guidelines of the grant travers ban is if they award, if they award, well, let me take that back. The opinion that we received from legal counsel years ago, it said, the only way we could do this would be if we had a contract with the awardee to provide the services. That's the only way we can legally do it. So twelve, I, we're already doing that. We're already administering those contracts. You're just, you're just doing that as a, as a, you're just adopting that as part of your policy because you're honored to do.
Right.
Thirteen, I mean, if you want to take that out, if you don't want the report, it says this is what, this is what the tribe receives to prove that the grant is valid. And here it is.
Has there been a second on the amendment?
Yeah.
No, that was a second, I already know.
And then that amendment should be excluded first.
Understand, but it's Commissioner Algar and the administrator contact to communicate back forth, so.
Right, but somebody's got to approve the amendment.
Understand, but I was.
So just approve, the amendment is just to exclude number thirteen.
Alright, so now we have an amendment. Is there, is there a second to the amendment?
Can anyone second it, or it doesn't have to be the original?
No, anybody, anybody can second that. Alright, the amendment hasn't been seconded. Discussion on the amendment.
I just don't think we need a report. We never had that.
Okay, my question would be to the administrator, is that item number thirteen to strict that, or to strike, strike that out? Is that, does that con, make a conflict with the rest of the policy or not?
I mean, we could, we could exclude that if you don't want to report, you don't, you don't, you don't, and you don't need it. Actually, I won't say that we might prepare it just for historical purposes, so we can provide someone like Commissioner Robbins if wanted that data. Just wouldn't provide it to the, to the board.
Walter?
I think that data, like you said, is essential to, to, you know, if I. If I got an applicant who's asked for funds three times, and three times they haven't met the provisions, then, you know, it would be a thing, why would we ask them? Why would we consider anything they asked for again? What's it, you know, we got to have the data to do that. If we don't have the data, we can't say like, that would just refuse to satisfy. If I don't have some.
Any other discussion on that amendment? Not all in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So it fails to the, or.
Who are the guesses?
Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Algar. Yes, well, Commissioner Robbins said as well.
Still.
So it fails three to three. Alright, so now we're back to the original motion of the policy. Any discussion on that? Alright, not all in favor of the policy, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carried by one. Alright, next up, we have the well water monitoring project. I believe there's EDS provided here, updated one.
That's, this is, this is an update with specific dollar amounts. You were considering this at your last meeting, and we, administration asked you to forward it to this meeting so we can try to do exact dollar amounts. We've got that. Now, we believe that total, not to exceed cost would be seven thousand dollars. The only thing I did include in the EDS is the, the actual transmitters and cables that, that is the bulk of the cost. Twenty-one hundred dollars approximately each. That is what we believe to be the, I guess I would call it the gold standard. It's possible that we can get that for cheaper, or it, it, it really relates to the specification to the transmitter and the length of the cable that's going to be number when we do the, when we actually do the well, or actually place it in a well. If we can get that for, for cheaper, we will. But that is, we're presenting to you a not to exceed price of seven thousand dollars and eight cents actually. And ask that you approve that as presented.
Right, they have a motion?
I move that the county board of commissioners approve the project budget for the law enforcement well monitoring project as presented and authorize funding from account four seven oh dot, a lot of zeros, dash seven five oh dot zero zero in all budget amendments that may be necessary to complete the project.
Second.
We're back, Commissioner Robbins. Discussion?
I'll be correcting his account number to seven seven five and all the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Understand, is that okay?
Sure.
I believe the one on the EDS was different from the one on the sheet, which was the correct one, I believe, that's what she burned. So, alright, any discussion on that motion? Alright?
Usually you have a, up two, I guess that wasn't in there.
Right, it was, we all know.
Right, it's on, it's on the yellow.
Yellow sheet.
Oh, I had a white sheet.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, any other discussion? If not all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, next up, we have a review of financials. Kathy?
I did not receive any requests for information on late claims, except a verbal from Commissioner Bunnick. And it's regarding payment made to United Way. They are the fiduciary for Leonard County Family Coordinating Council. You have a fifteen thousand dollar budget, approved budget to send them money once a year as an allocation. And then opioid settlement funds are for the balance of that check that's being issued to United Way. I, in a conversation about the opioid settlement funds, that is a pot of money that we receive from the class action lawsuit regarding opioid abuse and from the pharmacies, from the drug companies. And there is a specific toolkit from the attorney general of the state of Michigan on how you can allocate those funds. So I'm going to get that to you. You're going to need it to look at that toolkit going into the summer months when we start budget. But that's what that payment to United Way is. They're the fiduciary agent for Leonard County Family Coordinating Council. And these are approved budget payments.
Questions?
I, I might add that MAC has, the MAC Association has, I believe, every Friday, at least in their report, a forum or an open dialogue about the spending of these monies to make sure that you're in line and in discussions with other counties. What some counties do is they open up to the community for groups to submit applications for the money. Should they have ideas other than what might be considered within government? Not through perhaps nonprofits, perhaps churches, perhaps some other social or civic organizations.
And I think it was the previous board, I mentioned, there is a documentary on Netflix regarding opioid settlement abuse across the nation. If you're interested to see what not to do, I've heard it's quite good.
Alright, any other questions, Kathy?
Thank you for that.
And I did verify, post audit does have the payment for point broadband. It's on the last page of report number two.
I thought so. I read that now.
Yeah, I just, it was so close to the end of the month. I think it was, Administrator Dyer was correct. It was right at the end of April. And it is in post audit. And I did go to my office. I apologize for leaving the room. I had reordered the agenda differently than what was done, but there was a memo sent to you by interim administrator Richard Lewis on February eighteenth, and it was in an EDS form at that meeting. So if you'd like to revisit, it was sent to you, and it was Tim Perone, attorney Tim Perone's response to treasurer John Gallagher regarding the DTR fund and the use of those dollars for point broadband. And it references an MCL, and that DTR may be transferred to the county general fund by appropriate action of the county board of commissioners. The fact that we have a policy. The fact that we have a policy that is separate from the MCL, and you can set aside your policy to do, make transfers to the General Fund as you see fit, which the previous board did by motion in August. So I'm just bringing you back to a discussion that we, if you recall, but I'm happy to give you this document again, but it was distributed to this board in February.
I, I don't believe, uh, that that motion did include any reference to the, to the policy, I don't think that policy was even law when that was passed, honestly, or had been discussed. That's, so anyways, I mean, and I disagreed with the Attorney's opinion, he, he said, well, he basically said, well, if you spend it, that's, that's sort of like, uh, commending your policy. No, that's like a lawmaker breaking the law and then saying, well, that law doesn't count because I broke it. I know that's bad, I, this is not a law, this is a policy. There's no policy police out there. I just am kind of a policy, I think it's good for us to follow our policies.
And I agree. I'll say, may, this is my opinion, I think motions, the wording in motions can be very specific and say, and the board chooses to set aside its policy, that could be in the motion, if that would help clarify things.
This is what I've written, under transfers twenty-five dash oh-oh-seven is a, is a cat, no, that is a budget preparer, blah, 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 blah. I do have it here, I thought I got it written here. By its vote today authorizing payment to point broadband through a withdrawal from the County Delinquent Tax Revolving Fund, the Lona County Board of Commissioners recognizes the action as a one-time exception to its DTR policy. That policy remains in effect and should continue to guide the future financial planning and decisions in Lona County. That's what I was trying to get on that.
That's something you wrote?
I did. No, I was AI. Actually, I knew AI, and I've been better.
That decision was just, that was, that could have been made four years ago.
Well, no, I think it was last year.
No.
For the DTR.
No.
Motion, when it was, the motion advanced.
When we approved point broadband, we could, we would have to go to two-two. The official motion was made in August of twenty-four to officially finish the, the financial commitment to the five million dollar point broadband with the balance of the ARPA funds plus the interest earned on that, those dollars, the balance coming from DTR. The official motion was made in August of twenty-four. And when we made it, committed four years ago, we knew that's what we were going to do. I think it was an indication that that was the plan, but the official motion. This review is done?
We knew we could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up, we have special reports by staff commissioners and affiliated agencies. Special reports.
I would just say that.
Commissioner Mike, and then.
Oh. Well, I, I just wanted to say, I was at the Airport Finance Committee, and they're talking about a half a million people going through the airport this, this summer. So they said, it's going to be very, very busy, so be patient. And this is, this is why they need to expand. But they've never, I mean, the most they've ever had is at seven hundred thousand in one year, but they're expecting a really big summer.
Yeah. Charlie?
Um, as we said, Northern Michigan Community Coordinating Agency, and they, in their budgeting for twenty-twenty-six, at this point, they know there is no funding for this start. At this point. And funding for weatherization and homeless assistance programs, and those programs work at getting people into permanent housing. All of that funding is very questionable at this point.
Thank you, any other special reports?
I might just say, from the Parks Commission, we're working, well, thanks first to all the volunteers around Friday, planted trees at Rockville Valley. Wasn't there, but I understand that there were plenty of volunteers and I see trees on, so I, that was, that was excellent. But we're also working on a couple, uh, things, uh, that I'm pretty excited about. We're talking about a memorial park bench and table program, whereas people might be able to, in the memory of someone, purchase a, uh, some outdoor furniture for parks with a, with a, with, you know, kind of the type that you don't have any maintenance on, anyways, with a plaque on it, which, which would be very helpful. And, uh, there's work towards establishing, it's been discussed, you know, friends groups for each of our parks, and I know a kids fishing day, uh, Dave Barron is, is very excited about it, yep, he's going to be sitting at a booth and lighting up, so. Good thing.
Okay.
June twenty-second.
Very awesome. Nadine? Alright, now, we are on to our final public comment, you have five minutes.
Okay, um, hi, my name is Christine Geiger, and I am, uh, from Traverse City. Um, I'm here tonight to raise a serious concern about thirteenth Circuit Court Judge Kevin Elzenheimer. Um, this concern goes far beyond a single courtroom ruling. It's about judicial misconduct, conflict of interest, and abuse of authority under the color of law. Judge Elzenheimer has received, he received six lawful notices over a period of July twenty-twenty-four through January twenty-twenty-five, certified mail, which he failed to respond to, as did his, uh, colleagues. My trust has filed a UCC one lien against Judge Elzenheimer. This filing is not frivolous. It is lawful public notice of claim asserting that this judge acting outside of his proper role caused harm to me personally, professionally, and financially, and the pattern of misconduct must be brought to light. Let me start with the Studio Eight Hair Lab case, yes, I am from Studio Eight Hair Lab. That case directly involved my business and my rights. Judge Elzenheimer's ruling in that matter was not only legally flawed, it was ideologically driven. His decision, he referenced the term, in his decision, he referenced the term non-binary, as if it were a defined legal category under Michigan law, it is not. That is a social or political identity, not a legal status. When a sitting judge begins interjecting undefined extralegal terminology into official rulings, he is no longer interpreting the law. He is creating policy from the bench based on ideology. That is not his role, that is a breach of judicial duty. It reflects bias, not neutrality, and it reflects activism, not justice. But it doesn't stop there. After presiding over the Studio Eight case and issuing a decision that severely impacted my rights and livelihood, Judge Elzenheimer then presided over my divorce and custody case. He did not recuse himself, and in doing so, he violated a core principle of judicial ethics, avoiding even the appearance of bias. How can any citizen trust the fairness of a family court ruling when the judge has already ruled against them in a high-profile ideology-charged business case? This is more than a bad decision. It is a pattern of misconduct, and under the Uniform Commercial Code, when someone operates under the color of law, steps outside their official capacity and causes harm, they become personally liable. The lien the trust filed reflects that. We must stop pretending that judges are untouchable, they are public servants, and when they violate public trust, they must be held accountable, just like any other official. I'm asking this board to take the following steps. Recommend a formal inquiry into Judge Elzenheimer's conduct. Investigate the conflict of interest created by his handling of both the Studio Eight case and my custody case, and support his removal from the bench if it is found that he has violated judicial ethics or rights of those appearing before him. When a judge shows bias, twist the law to fit ideology and fails to recuse himself in the fa- face of clear conflict, he must answer to the people, this isn't just about me, this is about the future integrity of our court. I have here copies of the UCC filing along with the website that shows the public, um, public posting of the notices that he was served. There's enough copies here for all the members of the board, if you'd like to have one. I also work, um, for an organization that, um, one of our programs is called Freedom in Action. This year, we will be taking on sheriffs and judges all across the country to find out if they're constitutional or not, and if they support the Constitution. And we will have a process that we'll go through in order to, um, in order to endorse those candidates. When we find candidates that we, uh, that are not constant, that are not operating, uh, with the Constitution in mind, and their actions don't reflect that, we will be finding candidates to replace them. Um, I am coming, the, the UCC lien that was filed, was filed on February twenty-six this year. So this is all very new, we're still in the process of taking further steps with the IRS, um, we're in regards to that needs. I, out of courtesy, I am letting the local officials know about this first, but that courtesy is going to be done because we will be, uh, show, shedding light on it all across the country.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am also here to inform you, um, that I filed, um, a bond claim against Judge Elzenheimer for due process in Bailey versus Antrim County, myself, and
Name your name.
Uh, I'm Renee Wyler from Lake Leland.
Thank you.
And, um, I filed a bond claim, um, as of April sixth, it has not been, it responded to by your MMRA. Uh, there are two other women that also filed, uh, our due process rights were violated when, um, we were not allowed to intervene, we were not allowed to be in a hearing. We had specific information regarding the land records and the voter records, and he did not want us to be, uh, to testify, so we have filed the bond claim on due process violations. We have also, uh, filed a claim with the Michigan Civil Rights Commission and with the US DOJ. I have, um, these, um, notices that I would like to give you. We had a convoy go from OC to DC, from Orange County to, uh, DC, and we have connected with DOGE, and because our courts are out of control, we have the probate courts violating the rights of older people, we had, they're taking their properties, we just had an eighty-nine-year-old woman here in Sutton's Bay, her property was put up for share of sale, and I looked at those documents, and those are the same documents that I gave the prosecutor's office on Huntington Bank. And we have impostors coming in and acting as Huntington Bank. We have impostors, um, I have three parcels where someone came in and, uh, pretended to be my mortgage company. So these are your notices, um, because we're not going to put up with this anymore, we can't have elderly's homes taken away. We don't know who owns any homes. We have a fictitious entity in, uh, the Bank of New York Mellon, and, uh, Grand Travers County is investigating this because we've been unsuccessful in getting anybody in Leland County to wake up, so. This is my notice to you. I just wanted to be to you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment? Mr.?
Keith Ashley, Leland Township. Want to read an excerpt of a letter from, uh, Robin Schmidt, who was the, uh, local, uh, representative for Eagle to, uh, Mr. Onan, our Drain Commissioner, uh, a week ago, May fourteenth. I'll just read the next excerpt. The Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Water Resources Division received notification from Brian Sensi, G.E.I., your agent via email, that this pending application should be closed due to expected time needed for project redesign and other considerations. The application fee will be retained and used for the new application submitted for this project. This is the Schaumburg Drain Project. I'm not in it, so it doesn't affect me personally, but I have several friends that are in that district and are going to be, uh, assess the cost of it. Uh, so I'm speaking up for one of them who will not come to this meeting because of age. A hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars has already been spent of the public's money. Um, and, uh, the public is now in the dark as to what is transpiring with, uh, proposed redesign and other considerations, and we don't know what other considerations means. So I'm wondering, is it reasonable for this board to request an update from Mr. Onan at an upcoming BOC meeting? One of these people that I'm speaking of faces serious fiscal difficulty with the potential assessments from this project, which is right now estimated to be over a million dollars. And, uh, if, whatever this redesign is intended to accomplish, uh, we don't know, but, uh, it's going to be added costs, so that money is going to be added on to the assessment. So I think the, uh, affected citizens and taxpayers, your constituents are entitled to an update on what the Drain Commission and their agent, uh, Mr. Sensi, uh, is intending to do. Through that, thank you.
Thank you. Comment, yes, Kathy?
Kathy Dawkins, Leland Township, um, number one, I kind of went through points here. I have no problem with our Administrator running for the Cherryland Board of Directors. Uh, we had a Commissioner here for how many years who served as a, um, on Cherryland, along with serving as a Commissioner, and no one saw a problem with that then. I don't know why we have a problem with it now with our Administrator. Number two, taxes. I don't pay a lot in taxes. I pay thirty-eight dollars for one thing, something for another, and the services I get back for that money that I pay in my two thousand dollars a year, I could not get those services without my two thousand dollars a year going in along with everybody else's. You take away, you cut down my taxes, you cut down on my services, you're going to make my life harder. You're not going to make it easier, so stop talking about this. Numbers. Go there. Um, Commissioner Bunnick, you made a statement that you felt, um, there was no continuity between the different governmental units as far as these two percent applications. My response to that is, I am sure that if you contacted these other, other governmental units, that you could all sit down and talk to each other about what's going on. There's nothing stopping you from doing that. Uh, my understanding of how this works with the two percent is, number one, an applicant comes and gets the application. It starts out with the county first, then you decide whether or not you're going to forward it over to Grand Travers Band. If it doesn't meet the qualifications as you see it, you're not going to forward it. And I know that has happened, because when I worked for the Coordinating Council back in the late nineteen nineties, we had applications that did not get forwarded. And then there was a lot of discussion, and I think Commissioner Robbins, that's where you were going with your twenty-fourteen. By the time that happened, I was no longer with the, working with a, a coordinating council, I was not in on those discussions. Um, so you decide that that application's going to go over to the Grand Travers Band. They then decide, using their parameters, their policies, which has been given to them by our court system in the state of Michigan and the federal government. I don't know what has changed in all of these years that we are now back here ag- I don't know what has changed in all of these years that we are now back here again talking about how this process should work. It's, it's the Grand Travers Band's 2% program. You are the gatekeeper. You are not the people who can decide what they want to use for their parameters as to who gets the, the money. Is there a class for commissioners to take? There is. Have all of you commissioners taken it? I know you can't answer. Well, it appears that some people haven't. Thank you.
Weiser Elmwood Township, need to get this big call, one person, one ballot, one vote, one day. We're sure that there is no fraud. So simple. And I would ask some people that don't seem to want to hear about this, to answer the fourth question that I had for the county. Do you have an explanation on why so many Democrat leaders were concerned about election fraud from 2016 to 2020, but now they're not complaining at all? What happened? Some part of their brains left? And a comment about the one lady that was talking about non-binary? That goes back to John Money. He's a psychologist back around the 60s, 50s maybe. He experimented on twins, two boys, and one of them, in the circumcision, there was an accident, I don't know how all that goes, but it was appearing that he couldn't be identified as a boy or a girl. So they said, well, at this point, he wanted to experiment. He wanted to show that this could happen, that this is a legitimate thing. So he said, we're going to treat this boy as a girl and go on with that. And it went on for like eight years, and he kept saying how well it's going, and there was a whole lot of corruption going on, and the little boy, who looked like it was, they were trying to make him look, he always felt like a boy. And that's a bunch, it's, it's, the words are used to confuse and to advance this agenda. And so when I see a gender questionnaire, I cross off gender. I cross off anything that's not realistic. And then I go to, if, if sex isn't included, I put sex in its place, and I allow female and male, everything else gets crossed off, and I turn it in, and I suggest everybody do that. I'll, I'll give you a copy of what John Money's all up to. And I would hope that she would turn that in and send it to clerk@leland, lelandaw.gov, so all of us could see her handout that she gave, not just you guys. This handout is a continuation of last week's handout that I just gave you. The link is there at the top. It starts at the 11 minute, 3 second mark. And here again is Arapahoe County, Colorado, Democrats and Republicans voting perfectly in sync on a, on a vote to raise the taxes. On the next page on the top is how they changed it recently. They said, whoops, that got through, that's not good, and they're taking this guy, Ed Solomon, to court in June, and they changed this to make it look like there's a 30-point difference between how Republicans in every other county voted, but not in Arapahoe. So they changed the cast vote records. That's why I want to hear the cast vote records. What do the election source say about that? And then again, on the page three, it shows ranked choice, choice voting being voted on in Clark County and Washoe County in Nevada, and how the early voting was at 70%, but magically for the in-person voting all across, it went down about 30 points. And if you notice, if you'll see this, I'm going to turn it in, the parts in yellow, they're perfectly aligned for Democrats and Republicans on that. And the last page is looking at, oh yeah, the other thing they looked at was open primaries or closed primaries. They wanted to get open primaries in so they could be thrown, and the people and different parties don't get the choice, but another party gets them. And the last point was on abortion, and that changed dramatically too. I've heard Democrats in this, they say, we would never vote for that, but they had like 95% of the Democrats voting for that. So I'm just hoping that we can, here in this county, what about the cast vote records? What does election source say about that? And what does election source say about, what was the second question? Oh yeah, their seniors saying we have a backdoor to these machines. Thank you very much. Consider this.
Is this one more too?
Yes.
I'm going to try both seats out. Casey Pets, Sutton's Bay Township, want to commend the board for your thoughtful deliberations tonight and discussions on a topic of 2%. It's really important for all of us in the community to see your thinking and deliberations in a public body on a really important topic that affects all citizens, as you guys have mentioned. I want to go to Commissioner Walters' comment about local units of government applying and address a little bit of that. Local units of government don't necessarily have to apply, because the consent, consent judgment actually was created with three tiers. What we were, most of the discussion tonight was about tier three. There are two other tiers within the consent judgment. Tier one is when a local unit of government can show actual costs related to serving the members of a tribal community. So within the consent judgment, if you have, let's say, a fire department or a local public school with 30% of their allocated costs going directly to servicing people within that tribal community, that local unit of government is eligible for direct cost reimbursement. So let's say 30% of fire department runs are to tribal properties, and that is tier one. Tier two addresses payment in lieu of tax. So any local unit of government assessing tax on eligible properties, in our case Sutton's Bay Public Schools District, cannot assess property tax on the electronic gaming floor space of any casino, in particular Leland County Sands. So we are funded, as of our current status, 100% of our funds are coming from local property tax. District cannot assess tax on that electronic gaming floor space. So tier two of the consent judgment is a payment in lieu of tax, payment directly to the local unit of government for the uncollectible tax that is owed to the public school or the local unit of government, because we are not the only one that has that same claim. Tier three, what you guys spent a lot of time talking about tonight, and I agree with a lot of the comments here, is not the purview of a district or any individual citizen or this board to decide what the tribe does and does not do in tier three. But tier three is prioritized behind tier one and two. Just wanted to make sure everybody heard that part of that. I encourage everyone, if you have more questions, reach out, contact legal counsel, be deliberative about what tiers one, two, and three do, and how it is being implemented in our county with our local units of government. Thank you.
Hi, Kate Gallup, Cleveland Township. I appreciate that you guys are very curious people and discerning, and I learned a lot. And I am fully on the side that the tribe should decide what they want to do, and I appreciate having nonprofits pass along. Looking long-term, county sustainability measures are really important to me and how we support the vulnerable people in our community. I think that should continue to be in our mind during these times. I was just at a climate change meeting earlier and talking about what's happening nationally and locally, and I think it's important for our county to think about being prepared and adapting, and what that might look like. And then another thing I'm very concerned about is affordable housing. So I was at a client's house recently, and I thought, that's a nice house, but it's pretty modest. And I looked it up, and they bought it around 2019 for $220,000, and it's now worth $800,000. So almost a fourfold increase in these six years. And wages in our area have not gone up like that, which, in addition to not having a lot of houses, we're having a crisis. A lot of people think that nationally we have unemployment right now, but the living wage unemployment is 24.2% nationally. I don't know what that looks like for our county, but a lot of people are not making a living wage. And currently, I was trying to look it up for the county, but again, I don't have a specific county, but the lowest living wage for a single person with no children is $25 per hour. With kids, that goes up to 40, 50 or more, just to make it. So I want these things to be ways we can think about in policies. Okay, also with the environment, kind of jumping back there, I love the spring, and I love looking at the water, and a major part of what we are called to do, I think, is protecting our watershed. And I'm worried about the buildup of microplastics in our environment. Two major places that they originate is in, from tires, from the wear down on our roads, and that's very close to our waters, a lot of the roads around here, and synthetic clothes. When we wash them, they break down. There's many developing solutions. A recent entrepreneur event they had a couple years ago, the winning group had a filter for your washing machine to prevent the microplastics from going into the waterways. And there's also road dust capture devices. So I think it would be great for us to look at these types of solutions and how they might be incorporated, or just affirmed as something or education to people about what can be done. And my last pet peeve, speaking of pollution, is there's dog poop everywhere on streets in the county. People are not picking up. One of the best policies I ever saw a city make, or county make, was to require three bags to be carried by anyone with a dog out on public roadways, and if they didn't have three bags with them, they were fined. And I think that that's an extremely reasonable way to get people to start picking up after themselves, because dog poop is a huge pollutant. It's classified as an environmental hazard by the EPA. There's a lot of water here, so a lot of it gets washed. People think dog poop's natural, it's not. You want to have your own waste just left in the environment. This waste is also increasing the nitrogen levels, and that creates blooms and other things, and a lot of things that we need to be especially cautious as our waters increase in temperature. And there are places in the, not here, but in other places in the national park where there's so much waste that they have to close trails. And I know we don't have purview over the national parks, but we do over city roads. And I think anything we can do to encourage people to clean up and keep the area beautiful and disease-free would be great. Thank you.
Josh Barman, Elmwood Township. First, I wanted to thank the gentleman that's heading out, but the one that was behind me.
Sorry, you go.
That was the first time that I had heard the three tiers even brought up in these meetings, and I just like, I'm just a dude that comes to these meetings that's wanting to get involved locally, because I love Northern Michigan, I love Leland County Peninsula. And it is, it's just a little interesting that we're like, that it doesn't, I don't know if we're all as prepared as we should be to have these big conversations. I would like to have not learned, you know, on meeting 17 about these 2% allocations, about these tiers. I did some Googling, and I'm sure you did your work, so I'm not at all suggesting that you guys were negligent, because like, I tried and could only find out so much. But it's really interesting to learn new information, how these are decided after we've discussed it for so long. So I really appreciate when people come prepared to these meetings and like, bring forward numbers, real facts, stuff that we can go off of to decide these. I think for the public that might not have access to the same information you guys do, it's just super, super nice to be able to get that from trusted sources, so we can all be kind of on the same page, we're having these conversations. And then on those 2% allocations, I would also say, if we are concerned that without the gamble of the tribes choosing that particular allocation for a fire department or a school to be funded, we're probably not being responsible with our money anyway. And this could be me speaking out of ignorance for how the finances work, totally acknowledge that I do not understand county financing, but seemingly, we should make sure our schools and our fire departments are funded without needing the gamble of the tribe possibly choosing that particular allocation for the money. Done with that. Now on affordable housing, I wanted to thank Commissioner Campbell for throwing affordable housing on the agenda last week, because I think it is a huge issue. I, I'm a Realtor, I've been a Realtor for 10 years. I started in 2015 in Grand Rapids. Prices have gone up tremendously. Friends of mine that have great jobs can't afford to buy. And I'm just really curious if we actually want to try to solve this, or, you know, because it could be really cool, we could be the first county that kind of does something to figure it out. We're a tourist economy, it's unique, it's going to be very challenging, but we do have some unique avenues because of our unique climate. I've got a lot of ideas, but I'd be really curious if you guys are willing to investigate how to actually do this, find places that have done it successfully, possibly add it as an admin priority to determine how to do this. Some general ideas in no particular order. If you lower construction costs, access to lower-cost dollars, you could use county bonds. County could provide staff to help local villages and townships who know their constituents best to make decisions on things like planning and zoning. You could go real heavy and allow the county to try to talk to the Michigan law to allow a different taxation on short-term housing. Landowners that are willing to do long-term rent at an affordable rate could get their P R E returned to them, add a millage for affordable housing, or petition the county board, put it on ballot, to let us decide as a democracy whether or not we want to start supporting affordable housing initiatives. So anyway, just general thoughts, but thank you guys.
All right, thank you. Next up, we are to Commissioner Collins. Thank Commissioner Collins.
Welcome back in time here. July 24th. Time I believe, or maybe off the month, Kathy, but I think that was the time you got promoted. Okay. It's been almost a year. You did a great job, you got your staff filled, you got a great assistant, that assistance of the clerk and chief deputy. And during that meeting, I remember Mr. Lewis bringing up that it's probably also time that we start looking at software. And I remember your comment then was, it's midterm, you're just getting started, and it's been almost a year. We're about eight weeks away from going into budget, and I think it's time that we have our administrators start exploring for us and bring it back maybe next month before the budget, that we start looking at the, I mean, the system I've been hearing about is B S and A, software, government program, from what I've been told. Like I said, been doing a great job, but I think it's time that we need to start looking, because it's not going to happen overnight. From the time you do sign the contract, from what I've been told, it takes eight to nine months, so it's not going to happen this year, but I think it's time that we discuss it as a board, with our treasurer, and along with you, Kathy, and decide what direction we're going to go.
I would concur that we did, that was our plan, that in the future, after the findings department is settled and stable, that we would start and stable, that we would start looking at that. And that that was a critical part of the transition that we saw. And we put it off until the finance department was stable. So, and it will take months and months and months. So I think, I think that would be over as well, to start addressing that.
All right, thank you. Any other commission comments?
Real quick, I'm a neophyte as far as the budget process, but I think, uh, I think there's been a lot of change, upheaval, whatever, in the past, uh, couple of years. Now we, now we have a, an administrator who is here full-time and for a while. And, uh, I'd like to start a discussion as far as the budget process and have commissioners involved in determining that process. Um, and I think that's new for you. I mean, uh, at least up here in Lelandau County. Uh, so rather than, uh, I mean, I, I saw, I, I saw some, I don't want to say upheaval, but let's just say la, I think last year's budget was kind of a pass along because of timing and we had an interim, uh, we had an interim administrator. And frankly, uh, situations controlled the budget process rather than the county controlled the budget process. That's understandable. It was tough here. I understand it. But this year, let's, let's start early, get an handle on it. If we can start talking about it next month, I think that'd be wonderful.
Yes, I can refer to that actually, that, uh, my plan was to present to you a proposal and some ideas on how we might do that. And I could do that in, in June as well. Uh, so anyone that wants to contribute or discuss that with me, just set up a time with, uh, Lauren, I'd be happy to sit down with you, take your individual ideas and incorporate that into a proposal with the entire board to discuss it in June. I think that's a, that's a tremendous idea.
Any other commission?
I'll just add a quick thing to, um, Josh. We need to learn about land pay.
You? Any other commission comments? It seems land man, that was pretty good show, but it's a little different. All right, moving on to approval of financials.
I think you're going to start with amendments and transfers on the agenda. I did send an email. I gave you hard copies tonight. I'm not sure if you like the hard copy in paper form or in your inbox, so you'll have both. Um, the revisions.
Paper form really helps.
Okay, well, they.
What I had on my computer was, it was just so small, I had a hard time.
Sure. Well, I always give them to you both ways, so you have the option. I did, um, give this to you a week ago, just so you'd have time since it's so involved. I did make a few revisions in your email tonight. I did tell you specifically what those revisions are. With regard to fund transfer number 003, we recalculated the transfer to the dispatch fund and the radio communications project fund because I use a year-to-date figure rather than an April 30th hard stop. So I just backed it up ever so slightly. And that was the only change to the fund transfers. The revision to budget amendment number six from last week, uh, deletes an amendment to, uh, budgeted transfer out to the radio com project. It was not necessary, so I just deleted it. And a revision to budget amendment number seven, I had a couple of fat finger moments on two account numbers, so we fixed those. And I established a contingency line item in the radio communications project fund. Otherwise, what I asked, what I pointed out last week is exactly what it, these budget amendments and fund transfers represent, which is 3% increase in the wage per hour and our salaries for non-union employees is applicable. Where we utilize the $100,000 set into, by, set in contingency by the previous board for that purpose. And the 3% increase in wage per hour for the Teamsters per the ratified and signed unit contract. The increase in the Teamster workday from seven to eight hours is applicable for ratified and signed contract. The point broadband payment for cabinet 11 and 13 utilizing the balance of ARCA funds with interest and the remainder from DTR, which was, uh, done by previous board approvals. Or, and then just the budgeted transfers that are typical at this time of year, moving cash into funds that are, um, ne, necessary to pay bills in those funds. So if you would like to make your motions, then that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we, we, uh, pass approved on transfer 25003.
Second, Commissioner Robbins, discussion. Not in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post in a. Here it's zero.
I'd make the motion that we pass, we pass amendment, then approve amendment 25006 and amendment 25007.
Second. Commissioner Robbins, discussion. Not all here, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post in a. Here it's zero.
Claims and accounts.
I'd make the motion that we, uh, we approve claims and accounts for $366,740.91.
Second. Commissioner Robbins, discussion. Not all favor say aye.
Aye.
Post in a. Here it's zero. You mind?
I'd make a motion that we, uh, approve and pass post audit claims and accounts of $3,773,948.63.
Second. Commissioner Robbins, discussion. Not all favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post in a. Here it's zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy, does that do it for broadband or real?
No. Uh, I think there's still one more cabinet and, um, will be, I think the original amount from DTR was about 900 and some thousand, about a million dollars roughly, just under. So this is only 395,000. We'll still be moving 600 some thousand for the final payment to point broadband. And on the, uh, Congress is knocked out.
All right. That's, we are adjourned.